This is the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Borough Council Work Session. I'm going to ask Mr. Flynn to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you Bernie. The next item on our agenda is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items that are not on the agenda. If any such comments. Mr. Flynn?
Good evening, everyone and citizens of Westchester Borough. On September eleventh, two thousand and one at eight forty-five AM, on a clear Tuesday morning, an American Airlines Boeing jet seven sixty-seven loaded with twenty thousand gallons of jet fuel crashed into the North Tower of the World Trade Center in New York City. The impact left a gaping burning hole near the ATF floor with a hundred and ten foot skyscraper, instantly killing hundreds of people, trapping hundreds more on the higher floors. Peter Mulligan was on the hundred and third floor, my relative. So it's very important to me, September eleventh, he never got out. As the evacuation of the tower, it was twin. As the evacuation of the tower and its twin got underway, television cameras broadcasted live images of what initially appeared to be a freak accident. Then eighteen minutes after the first plane hit, the second Boeing seven sixty-seven, United Flight one seventy-five appeared out of the sky, turned sharply towards World Trade Center, sliced into the South Tower near the sixtieth floor. A total of two thousand nine hundred ninety-six people were killed in the nine eleven attack. Citizens from seventy-eight countries died in New York, Washington DC, and Pennsylvania. At the World Trade Center, two thousand seven hundred sixty-three died after the two planes slammed into the Twin Towers. That figure includes three hundred and forty-three firemen and paramedics, twenty-three New York City Fire Officers, thirty-seven Port Authority Officers who were struggling to complete the evacuation of the building and save workers on the upper floors. At the Pentagon, a hundred and eighty-nine people were killed, including sixty-four on America Flight seventy-seven, the airliner struck the building, and Flight ninety-three, forty-four people died when the plane crashed in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. One of our own was there that day. His name is Hector Mojica. Badge number thirteen thirty-nine, a twenty-year veteran on duty that fateful day. The forty-first precinct sits at the edge of the Bronx. That area is commonly known as Fort Apache. There was a full-length movie written about that area because of the violence. After a police radio notification, the precinct all rushed to the roof of the building to find hell raining down from the Twin Towers. Well, what do heroes do? They don't run from the problem, they run into the problem. Our Hector spent two continuous days without seeing his family and taking care of all those who needed help on nine eleven and nine twelve and nine thirteen. Mr. Galley?
Bernie Flynn and Dana deserve the lion's share of the credit for this. We've prepared a citizens commendation award for Hector, and I think this is the first time I ever remember council doing something like this since I've been on Borough Council. And it reads, "Now therefore, on behalf of the citizens of Westchester and the Westchester Borough Council, it is with great honor and pride that we recognize and commend Hector Mojica, who went on duty on September eleventh, two thousand and one as a patrolman for the city of New York, displayed valor, courage, and most of all patriotism in the face of international terrorism. Borough Council is pleased to honor your service on September fourteen, two thousand and twenty-one with appreciation and respect as a member of our community."
Thank you, council, for allowing us to do that.
Hi, thank you all. Out of my heart, I appreciate what's, and like Bernie said, Bernie lost for the family. I lost a lot of family members. So Mr. Day, partners in the hospital yesterday for surgeries with cancer. And every day, someone's dying that I know. I thank you. All I ask from all of us, audience, never say goodbye to your family. Yeah, see you later. You know what? That goodbye could be the last one. See you later means that you come back home. Think about that. Just goodbyes. Say, see you later. I do appreciate it. Bernie, thank you. If I do it again, believe me, we'll do it again. You know what? We're all Americans. We're here to serve our country and we serve it proudly. My son is going overseas in the next few weeks. He's been for eighteen months, serving it in the Army. So please keep him your thoughts too. And again, he's American. Thank you.
Thank you. Not entirely sure how to transition to a contract with our wastewater facility from that presentation. But here we go. The next item on our agenda is to enter into a contract with IEG slash Evoqua for the Taylor Run Wastewater Digestor Gas Safety Equipment Replacement Project at a cost of approximately sixty-five thousand dollars. Oh, Don wasn't here. Oh, how are you? Can you let us know briefly what's going on with this one?
Yes, we want your plant, gas piping. It, that's where all the sledge goes and methane gas being in that piping and then it goes out through our sack for that piping. Safety issue.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I, you know, I sort of just assume if you don't say it's not that it is. But thank you Bernie. Any questions from anyone else on this agenda item? Consent on number four?
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to approve the updated Declaration of Public Trust, Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions for the Chester County Municipal Grant Program relative to the Everhart Park Playground Project. Keith?
Hello, Keith Karowski, Director of the Parks and Rec Department. To a bit, this is kind of housekeeping. For us to receive the funds from Chester County, which is ninety thousand dollars, they have to update our Declaration of Public Trust, Convent, Conditions, and Restrictions. And basically, in a nutshell, what that says is that this land will remain park or open space in perpetuity. That's it.
Seems fairly simple. Any questions from council? Questions from anyone else? Consent? Alrighty. Number six, Keith, you're back up. Enter into a contract with BCI Burke Company for the purchase and installation of equipment for the playground project.
Again, this is part of the overall process. This is not an ask for anything more. This is part of the overall project scope. Just have to enter into this agreement to make it official so we can use the co-op source well to purchase all the equipment and make sure everything's here in a timely fashion.
Great. And all of this is part of the grant funding that we got?
Correct.
Any questions from council? Yeah, Nick? Well, Nick can't use his microphone, so we'll move on.
I appreciate that, President Kelly. Sure, would it be possible to indicate this is secured by grant funding, just for the record? I feel like that would just make it easier to read, especially if you're just coming in for the first time tonight and you don't have a saga in your head.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea and probably something that I don't know puts the items on the agenda initially. Now when we do.
It comes from me to Public Works, then to council, or to Dana, or to Bill to council. So I can certainly make that a note.
Yeah, and we should do that for everyone else, Public Works, et cetera, for getting grant funding for a project, to just throw that in a parenthetical.
Makes sense.
Cool. Thank you. Can we get consent on number six? Number seven is to discuss the WasteWell curbside composting partnership.
Mr. Galley, we, at the committee level, we feel comfortable making a decision for the entire council, and Mr. Williams is going to do a description of what this curbside garbage pickup is.
Evening, everyone. So really quickly, just want to start recapping why we're pursuing a composting program here in the borough. Here's a handful of reasons. Top two or three are environmental. The last three are ones that I think we can all get behind. Our Chester County landfill has less than fifteen years capacity. When it's full, we'll have to build another one somewhere else. It's not going to be in Chester County. We'll be exporting our trash to other communities. It's going to be a lot more expensive. It's going to be further away. That's going to increase costs for the borough. So we should do everything in our interest to extend the capacity of the landfill. Trash collection is a very expensive process for us internally, and one of those reasons why it's expensive is the tipping fees. We pay seventy-two dollars a ton to dispose of the trash that we take to the landfill. I'll circle back to that number in a little bit. This summer, the Sustainability Committee has looked at four different models for implementing composting in a community like Westchester, different costs, different complexities to each model, and that committee ultimately decided that the sustainable, financially sustainable option is to partner with a private company, does this, and implement it in a fee-for-service model. That took us to a company called WasteWell. They're the only company that services this part of Chester County. So we reached out to them and started brainstorming how we could work together on this. It's how it works. You get a big bucket, and when you sign up, these are all the things you can put in it, which you would otherwise be putting in your trash. Every two weeks, you put it outside. If you live in an apartment building, you put it like in behind the apartment building, they come pick it up. You put a compostable bag in there. So they're just like picking up the bag out of the bucket and you keep it going. Traditionally, if you were to go to WasteWell and sign up today, that would cost you eighteen dollars a month. The agreement we developed here has that same service available to Westchester residents at a seventeen percent discount. And my favorite part is for every ten residents that sign up in Westchester, WasteWell will pick up from one low-income resident for one dollar a month, that resident. So that's a ninety-five percent discount because we don't think that composting should be limited to those with disposable income. So how to make the numbers work? Well, the borough, under this agreement, would help offset that discount, offset some of WasteWell's lost revenue there. Keep in mind, I said that we pay seventy-two dollars per ton at the landfill. The average WasteWell customer compost, i.e. diverts from the landfill, four hundred and sixteen pounds per year. That comes out to fifteen in our fees. That would be, every customer saves us fifteen dollars in our tipping fees. And so in acknowledgement of that, and to help the numbers work out a little better, the proposal is that the borough would then chip a dollar per month, twelve dollars a year, back to WasteWell to make the numbers work. So saving fifteen, paying twelve, that's savings of three. Last week, we agreed to project the numbers as if, oh, who would sign up in two thousand and twenty-two? So we're projecting a three hundred dollar net savings if we were to employ this program. So from here, and we went to the committee, we don't have a full legal agreement yet, but we want, we took this to the committee last week to just make sure we're right, on the right track, see if there's changes we need to make, or, you know, maybe start from scratch and pursue a new idea. But, you know, again, composting is really great for our community, a lot of environmental benefits, a lot of financial benefits. And we've tried this a couple different times. We've gotten grant funds, we've built these programs. Grant funds go away, the program goes away. So again, this is the way that we believe to do this on a permanent basis and make it. From here, we would get a formal agreement, take that back to council for your approval, get the word out, enroll customers, educate them on how it works, and start composting. So again, tonight, we're just looking for approval of the framework and really this agreement here, the savings and the one dollar back per month customer to WasteWell.
This is a cool idea. Thanks, Will. The agreement that we would have with WasteWell, did you say how long that would be? Is that for a term of a number of years?
Haven't worked that out yet, but, you know, I'm guessing it would be two years initially and, you know, renew it every, every year from there on out.
Just so I understand, if I, let's say I wanted to enroll in this once we establish it, I would pay WasteWell directly sixteen dollars a year, or a month?
Fifteen.
Fifteen dollars a month?
This is the price to the customer?
Gotcha.
And then this is sort of behind the scenes with that one dollar per customer.
And then the borough's sort of subsidizing that?
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions from council on this?
Is there supplementary, like marketing materials, rollout, marketing campaign?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the company WasteWell, I think their website is mywastewell.com, incredible marketing, educational stuff. We, you know, it's, this is the gist of it right here. These are the instructions, but we talked about doing educational campaigns, events, you know, meet and greet, figure out how it works for people who are interested. I think we have a high level of interest in the community, but it's hard, composting is kind of hard to do, like in borough backyards. It's trash. We're talking about routing trash, and it's kind of tough to manage, nor do I think we really want to necessarily encourage it in some of our, like, tighter neighborhoods. So I think this is a good option, but the company has really good, clean materials, and they're really good at the education piece.
I guess it's a fantastic idea. Thank you.
I feel like we will get way more than a hundred people to sign up for this in the borough in a year. This would be extremely popular. I would even dare say, if this becomes popular, something we look at making compulsory composting. I know there are municipalities in big cities, like I think Seattle, where it is compulsory to compost. I'm lucky enough that I have a space in the yard where I can compost in the back, but I think there are a lot of people, you're right, who can't. So this would be enticing to them to, they want to, but there's no way to do it. So this would be, this is an incredible idea.
Mr. Galley, Bernie Flynn, what I mentioned to Mr. Williams was that they take the number of people, he figures a hundred people, to place in his budget for two thousand and twenty-two with the, and the sustainability budget, the amount of money, so it's earmarked. It then will come out of the general fund. It'll be already in the budget. Be aligned on it. If we don't use it, we don't use it. But it's not an enormous amount of money, but there should be a placeholder for it, you know, so we know it's there.
I agree. That's a good idea. Thanks, Bernie.
Just a logistical question about apartment buildings. So I live in a, like, three-story apartment building, so I'm curious about that, and also like green tree, or any of the larger apartment buildings, how that looks.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of like where you put your bucket out every, every two weeks, it's a good question. I think it'll have to be property by property. If they are able to access the building, apartment door. That works in some, you know, if it's like a, a big old borough house that's been chopped up into apartments, that, that might work. Or, you know, out front, out back, if it's green tree or something like that, probably have to have a designated spot and, you know, work with the property manager to make sure they're okay with it as well. But it's also really good advertising. You have that bucket out there with their name on it, and, yeah, I think apartments are a untapped resource.
Any questions from anyone else in attendance on this, ma'am? Yes, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Beth Ann Rosica, three three eight West Minor Street. I know that at the Special Finance Committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, there was talk about potentially charging for trash and recycling collection because the borough's not currently charging for that now. And I didn't know if there was any thought about how to combine this program with whatever initiatives you're doing that way. If we want to encourage people to do this, maybe there's a way to combine that with whatever we're considering charging as some sort of offset, just a suggestion in terms of looking at it as a full package. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw another hand raised with a question. Yes, ma'am. Next time, you'll sit up front.
I'm always in the back. Nicole Shimoney, five oh five Keystone Alley. Just a question on the fees. So the fifteen dollars a resident is based off a forecast of a hundred people for two thousand and twenty-two. Would there actually be a discount that would happen, you know, with economies of scale, if the number of residents actually use this program in future years? Like, if there were three hundred people, would it be, I don't know, ten dollars a customer, et cetera?
We haven't gotten that far discussing it, but I think it's a good idea. Certain thresholds, we can get lower rates. You know, running this business, the tricky part is the logistics of pickup. And when I approached them, my first point was, we have a lot of interested people in a very small geography. So that's how we got to the discount in the first place. They recognized that they are, you know, getting customers, but getting like easy customers. It's going to really help with logistics, not have to drive all over Chester County to pick up between customers. No, they're provided to you when you sign up. They're provided to you when you sign up. I think just one, but it's big. It's, I think it's a, might be a five-gallon bucket. It's either three or five. Yep. Yeah, five gallon. Yes, they do. You can keep it in your home if you want to. Most people keep it outside, but if, say you're in an apartment, you can keep it in and it has a good lid, so there's no smell getting out. And I left out one great part. Customers can get forty pounds of compost delivered for free every spring, get discounts on additional quantities of compost, so put that trash back to work in our gardens.
Did you think about, I don't know the intimacy, with any intimacy, how we get charged for our recycling program, but it seems like this would also divert some waste that goes into our recycling, like newspaper, cardboard, plates?
It definitely could. The funny thing about recycling is the price really fluctuates. Last year, we were paying fifty-five, sixty dollars a ton. This year, we're paying an average of five dollars a ton. The last three months, we've been getting paid. So based on what year it is, you either want to, you know, put as much as you can in recycling, or minimize recycling as much as you can. The most expensive has always been landfill. Recycling is somewhere in the middle, and compost would be the cheapest option yet. But, yeah, we could talk about that for a while. It's very interesting. And I think one thing we could do is, year to year, we could communicate to WasteWell customers, hey, this year, we want you to put your newspaper in your compost. This year, we're not because we're getting paid for it. Might be able to do some things like that.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Any other questions on this agenda item? Alrighty. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Have you even recognized those folks?
Yeah, absolutely. Anything we can do to encourage people to sign up, we will.
Cool. The next item on the agenda is, oh, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Probably pretty similar. I would defer to wastewater guys if we want to be doing that.
What was the question?
Environmentally, put a banana pit down the garbage disposal?
You're not supposed to do that.
You're gonna need to buy a new garbage disposal.
Don't put garbage field. Stop it. Don't do it anymore. I'll send, I'll send the plumbing inspector to your house. You know, seriously, it doesn't help our sewer plates. Our sewer plates, I'd have to treat that garbage. But it costs more money to then treat the water that comes through the system. And whatever else you're putting in there. Here's the best way of answering the question. My, my son-in-law is a plumber. He does not have a garbage disposal in his house. Does that answer the question?
Wait.
Sorry, I'm experiencing either operator error or technical difficulties. The next item on our agenda, number eight, is to hold a public hearing on October 20th, 2021 to amend section 3-38. B to add a new section to establish the community campus committee, which is something that was discussed last month. Any comments or questions by council on this agenda item?
This was, this was presented at the public safety committee and I don't think there was any, there's no dissent on council, but there was no, there was no real questions raised about it. I think it was pretty straightforward and, and very much in line from what the committee was before. So. Yeah. So I guess we don't really need to discuss it. We just need to set the date. Is that correct?
Does October 20th work for everybody?
Sure.
I think we're going to be here already. All righty. October 20th it is. The next item on the agenda-
Mr. President, can I, can I get a, can I get a clarification on the WasteWell compost thing? Was it council's consent for the sustainability director to pursue that?
I believe so. Does anyone disagree with that? Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. The, thanks, Kevin. The next item on the agenda is to discuss sending the solicitor to the zoning hearing board relative to an application at 501 Hanum Avenue.
So this application is for the applicant seeking relief for two criteria. One is for the parking spaces. They're required to have 60 parking spaces, requesting 40. And they're also requesting a relief from the maximum front yard setback in the commercial service, which is 20 feet. See for the plan there, that building is going to be set back much farther than the maximum 20 feet setback. One dimensional variance and one for the max minimum parking requirements.
What building is this?
This is the laundromat on Hanum Avenue. They redeveloped. Orthodontist office.
All righty. Any-
So like the, this, I was chairing Smarco at this one. So it came through and, and the committee agreed that we, you know, 3-0 that we should not send a solicitor, but the solicitor, Mr. Nagel, was there and he mentioned he would, you know, very much like if we would send a letter of recommendation to the zoning hearing board on behalf of council because of the development in that area, to, you know, something that would really benefit the area. We all agreed that that was probably a great idea, but we wanted to bring it to council. I don't think we actually had a recommendation for that. Did we? Was it 3-0? Yeah. So that really would be the ask, not to send a solicitor, but to send a letter of recommendation to the zoning hearing board to approve that.
Any thoughts from council on that aspect of this? Whether we should support this application for redevelopment of the lawn? Good with that? All righty. Kevin, I, I assume that's something you can handle. Thanks. The next item on the agenda is reverse subdivision plan for East Chestnut Street.
Yes, thank you. I'll wait for Mr. Mann to get the plan up there, but this is a fairly simple plan for a reverse subdivision of 243 and 245 East Chestnut. Currently there is a twin home there. The applicant seeks to bind those two parcels into one, bind the two twin homes into a single family dwelling. Sorry? I don't have construction plans. I do just have the reverse subdivision plan with. It's, yeah, no construction plans yet. It's just the site plan with the lot line elimination for the parcel. It's approved by the planning commission or recommended approval for the planning commission. There's no zoning issues associated with it. Chester County Planning Commission had no, it's on the review either.
Ready. Anybody else want to comment on agenda item number 10? Sent to subdivision. Ready. Next item are our three, I believe it's three. Harb. Applications, all of which seem relatively standard and which the committee approved. Any comments or questions?
These were all pretty straightforward. It's Smarco. I have any issues with any of these.
Thanks, Mike. Comments or questions from the audience on the Harb applications? Consent on agenda item number 11? Silence is golden. Number 12. Turn the microphone over to Mr. Flynn. First is to direct the borough manager to prepare an advertisement seeking residents to serve on pension committee contingent upon council's approval of that ordinance. Paul, we talked a number of months ago about establishing a pension committee.
All the documentation went to the solicitor and the information was filled out. Now we're at the position where we can advertise for the members of the board. And we, the committee felt that Mr. Perron and Mr. Metra could advertise and get the members set prior to getting the manager for the funds. So that this is, is a, they were asking for us to advertise an approval and we said yes.
All right.
Contingent upon the ordinance being passed tomorrow night.
I assume we would interview those candidates like we do anyone.
Is this something that we're, we're going to, like would the ordinance specify tomorrow night that it's starting like January 1? Is that we're starting next year or later date?
No, we'd, I, we'd like to get the committee organized as soon as possible. The council can, there's a list of things in the ordinance that you're going to have the ability to hand off to them for like, you know, job tasks for them to do. And then it's kind of open-ended where you can add anything financial that you want in the future.
Okay.
We had a civic-minded financial planner sitting up on the desk. Anybody think of one? Let me know. Consent to item number 12? Item number 13 is to approve the assumption changes for the 2021 actuarial police pension valuations as recommended by Muck and Haupt benefits group.
Barb? Good evening. So last month, council approved the valuation assumptions for the non-uniform. This month we're asking that council approve the assumed changes for the police pension plan. They're all relatively similar to what you voted for last month. Number one being lowering the inflation rate from 2.75 to 2.50. Other ones are very similar to what was passed last month for the non-uniform plan. The committee felt that it was a 3-0 to move forward on this.
Any questions for Barb on the valuation assumptions? Questions from the audience? Once. Consent for item number 13? Item number 14 is to approve the 2022 minimum municipal obligation for the police and non-uniformed pension plans and as provided by Muck and Haupt benefits group.
We don't have a copy of this right now, but this is basically just information that we're presenting to council. It will be in the 22 budget. It's for both the police pension and the non-uniform pension plans. Based on this information, the police plan will go up about $10,000 and the non-uniform plan will go down almost $112,000. Yes. So we're currently using BB and T. They do the administration on both pension plans. BB and T has now merged to be known as Truist. This contract will actually provide us a savings over three years. Currently we're paying a little over $208,000 for the administration services. And based on the pricing plan that they're able to put into place for us, we'll be paying $107,000. So that's a little over $101,000 savings over three years for the same services that are in place now.
Thanks, Bill. Any other comments or questions on item number 15? Ready? Consent? Thank you, Barb. Next items on the agenda are approval of the August 17th and 18th meeting minutes. Have any issue with the minutes? Consent? Ready? And then the last is the, is a report for the use of Bradford Avenue by PennDOT relating to a detour on 162.
So this is a quick informational item. Tropical storm hurricane, Big Storm Ida damaged the road, the bridge over the East Branch Brandywine on 62. We, PennDOT does not know when that bridge is going to get repaired. So they've created a detour route that necessitates the use of a portion of Bradford Avenue. At the committee, they asked, they asked the borough to look into plans of the detour. It's a good sign that Penn, PennDOT has prepared these plans. It means they've thought through options. They've created a sign plan. This is sort of standard procedure for PennDOT to implement it. What they need from the borough is permission for commercial vehicles to use that portion of Bradford Avenue north of the Fame Fire Company. So that's a good idea and that facilitate this detour. It's really just an informational item for council. It's a question of enforcement. We have, we have on our books that says you can't drive a commercial Bradford Avenue.
Toll Road. Exactly. Waystation and a toll road. It's going along well. I'm sure it can be brought up in conversations. This is how the turnpike started. Yep. Give me a couple bucks.
Yes, the portion of Bradford Avenue north.
Yeah, from Everhard Park up to Hanum Avenue is no commercial vehicles except for municipal trucks. Yes, we actually had one of our officers who also is an officer of East Bradford because we share services, issued a citation to one of the East Bradford Township municipal works.
There are already construction going on over there for the townhomes? Already got construction vehicle on that road.
So I was having a back and forth a little bit with Sue Walker, who's the district director for Representative Chrissy Hulahan's office. And Bernie, you know, sent, sent a couple emails, in particular requesting to, to speak with Sue Walker as the district director related to the, the flooding where ambulances can't get to Chester County Hospital, the train, as well as the ongoing post office saga. And she just wanted some buy-in that it wasn't just Bernie. So is everybody good with us convening a meeting with district director on those items, A and B? Would you like us to discuss anything else?
Yes, but anything we can do and get funding to help get studies for Goose Creek and the flooding along Goose Creek, it should be top of the list in my opinion.
I think that that's-
Yeah, that, that, thank you, Mr. Perron. And Mr. Mayor, thanks for following up. The, the meeting was supposed to be, it was supposed to happen yesterday. And we, I responded back to the councilwoman, Chrissy Hulahan's office, the Congresswoman- And I responded back to the councilwoman, Chrissy Hulahan's office, the Congresswoman, Chrissy Hulahan's office, that the timeframe that they had allotted for us wouldn't be enough time to cover those three small topics, which are hundreds of millions of dollars. And the mayor's picked the ball up and what they thought was a lone wolf sitting to the far right-hand side of the dais was trying to ram something down congressional office. And those three items are extremely important to the borough because when it floods, you can't use the emergency route, get to the hospital. Number two, our train have a buy-in from the Senate, United States Senate. And also, the post office is a wreck in town. And I thought there are three very important items that would take more than a lunch break. I canceled the meeting. I was very nice. I just said, you know, I think it takes more time than a lunch break to air out what we need to talk about. Thank you, Mayor, for picking the ball up.
See, there... There's a lesson here, part of this also, is when you all discuss things that are important for the entire borough. I think it's important that you all at least say, hey, listen, behalf of the borough, can the manager or the mayor or someone on council commit to, you know, rallying the troops and going talking to our politicians? And that's what they're there for, to help us get stuff that we need to get done. And I understand Sue Walker's position. Bernie was doing this a one-on-one. She's probably thinking, hey, we got one council member. I might listen to this guy. But if it's... Bernie had the authority to say, on behalf of borough council, I'd like to sit down with you. That was a totally different weight.
I'll certainly work to set up that meeting and invite all of council and administration and we'll have those conversations and whatever else John might have.
John O'Brien, Executive Director, Westchester Business Improvement District. There is a out-of-service mailbox that has been sitting in front of 50 East or West Market Street. I've tried contacting the Airport Road Postmaster. I've put a official request in with Chrissy Hulahan's office. It's been sitting there with caution tape, like, in the middle of the sidewall for the last two months. It's federal property, so I know the borough can't touch it. So hopefully, that's low-hanging fruit. They can put a little pressure and get that I swear out of there. Sure. The concrete that it's bolted to, that's why I make it a little more of a concern, but thanks.
The crazy thing about what Mr. O'Brien is saying, we don't know whether the post office, after it was struck by a vehicle, ever came and took the mail out of it. That mail could be still sitting in there forever. No, it's... It's pretty amazing. I knew I was... I knew that's where you mailed it. That gift card I was still waiting for.
Any other items you'd like to discuss, or is that sufficient? Alright, so we'll start with that. Another quick question separately. Are we getting an extension on the... Are we asking for an extension on the outside dining? I've got some questions on that.
Yeah, no, that's it. That's all we get. We haven't asked for any extensions. The... Mr. Galy brought up a little bit ago, you know, Joe Hilly, it's... Getting close to being able to turn... It's calling turnback. The feds turn back a piece of the federal highway system to a local government. So we're trying to get that for the four blocks of Gay Street. Been working on that for a couple of years. Instead of doing a turnback, we're gonna do a flip-flop. We're gonna take that and we're gonna have the new three take, you know, the regular detour that we use right now. Part of the feds' issue a while ago, when they first denied it, was the connectability with Route 10322. So by going up Chester Street, you actually accomplish that by doing that, if we give that to them. So it's a work in progress and hopefully, it's done before I say sayonara.
Do we want to ask for an extension till November or anything like that? We got one last year, right?
Well, at this point, to go back to the feds, it would take us about six months. And, you know, John and I have spoken about it, you know, for the bid. And there was no big push either way from the business community to do it, which that was my understanding.
Yeah, John O'Brien, Executive Director, Westchester Business Improvement District. So, I mean, there's a couple of issues at play. We saw last year when the weather got colder, the turnout on the street was a lot lower. We're at a bit of a different position now where folks are more comfortable sitting inside. The other issue facing us is the PICO Harmony IV project is still ongoing. Mr. Perron probably knows more about this than I do, but they are finishing up their portion of Gay Street, but they still need to do the 100 block of North Darlington, the 100 block of North Church Street, and the 50 and 100 block of North High Street. So there is potential for a lot of problems if they're closing down those blocks in terms of deliveries, emergency services, with having Gay Street shut down at the same time. So from the bid's perspective, we're trying to balance the interest there as well. But I think council would, you know, can talk, but maybe consider the extension of the cafe permits as we did last year. And I think in the very beginning of December, so depending upon that, if council might see fit to allow outdoor dining and the normal cafe permits on sidewalks that we currently allow, that might be beneficial.
Thank you.
It's like a 338 West Minor. So I live on West Minor where the traffic is pretty much redirected, and I will share that. As great as I think it's been for the businesses, I do think that it needs to be balanced out. Like, our street has become very, very busy, you know, with the traffic being diverted down that way. So just consideration for that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I got one question. This morning at the bid meeting, the question came up about expanding the business district. Now, the bid, the Business Improvement District just went through the regulatory organization last year. Spent quite a bit of money doing it. Is it... Does council have the ability to expand the business district, or does that have to come through the bid? I was hoping Mr. Perron would know the answer. Same, it stops right now at Matlock Street. If we want to take it down to Adams Avenue, where the apartment buildings are gonna be-
Let's take a step back and refreeze the subject matter. There's a new law on the books that I explained about a month ago. Can't discuss things to the council meeting. They're not on the agenda unless it's an emergency. If we need answers to those questions, we can research them. We can agenda next month and also can discuss it.
Thank you.
Authority to change districts. But I'm telling you that it's just a legal point that can be answered. The answer was there before the meeting. It's here now after the meeting. I don't see why we can't discuss that.